Ladies and gentlemen, it is Earth Week for the 44th year since the beginning in 1970. All across the world, we recognize environmental issues. My name is Craig Covey. I'm the Special Assistant to the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner. And I would like to welcome you. Thank you, David. It's good to be home. I'd like to welcome you to our Town Hall meeting on oil and gas drilling and fracking. Welcome to the city of Ferndale, and we would like to thank the city of Ferndale for being our host tonight, in particular Assistant City Clerk Marty McGrath, who made this possible. We also have as co-hosts tonight, the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission, as well as our County Commissioner, Helene Zack. Welcome. Thank you. We also have in the audience County Commissioner Marsha Gershenson, and City Councilman Dan Martin is here. Thank you all for coming. Our expert speaker, who questions the wisdom of unregulated drilling and fracking, is a local business owner and resident of Oakland County. From Holly, Michigan, he has worked as a water well driller for 30 years, and is very active in his local community and the issues that it faces. As the Director of District 18's Michigan Groundwater Association, he's very passionate about the use and issues of protecting clean water for our future generations, and he's been donating his time as an expert on these issues statewide. Please welcome Mr. Joe Currie. And it is also my pleasure to introduce Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner Jim Nash. Jim Nash has been working for the people of Oakland County since 2005, when he was first elected to the Board of Commissioners. His early focus on protecting the environment, green buildings, and social equity continues in his role as Water Resources Commissioner. He's also been deeply involved in regional collaboration efforts related to conserving and protecting our most valuable resource: clean, fresh water. Jim is a veteran and an 18-year resident of Farmington Hills. He and his wife Karen have been married for 27 years. They have four children, three grandchildren, living in Michigan. Please join me in welcoming our new and beloved Water Resources Commissioner, Jim Nash. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, for that interesting introduction. I'm trying to do these across the county, just to keep people aware of the issues surrounding fracking and oil drilling in particular. We have had opened, last year, last May, the state opened up, and October, opened 30,000 acres of state land in Oakland County to mineral rights, to fracking, to oil drilling, whatever the drillers want to do. And since then, several communities, and now the county itself, is considering leasing mineral rights to their land all across the county. Now, this is bringing up issues that I think we all need to be aware of. There's a lot of information, misinformation swirling around this issue, that I'm trying to help overcome with these meetings. The first one I did last year was September, beginning of September, and we had, gosh, close to 200 people in the auditorium up at the Oakland County Board of Commissioners. And I've never seen that many people at a Town Hall, so there's significant interest in this. We did another one a month or so ago in West Bloomfield. Both those times, we had people from the industry that came and gave their side. We tried, and we tried this year, for this event, to get somebody from the DEQ, or from the industry, or from the biggest company that's doing, is looking for leases in Oakland County, but nobody would come. So, we are working towards more of these up at the top of the county, and it'll be, we're working to get the gentleman from the DEQ, Hal Fitch, to come speak to these. I have suggested, and he says he's interested in doing it, just a one-on-one debate, so it would be just he and I discussing this issue, and then questions from the audience. So, unfortunately, we don't have a representative of the industry today. If anybody's interested in giving that perspective, I'd be willing to hear it. But we will be giving our perspectives on this, and I'd be welcome by any comment otherwise. First of all, I think I'm going to let Joe here do his piece on this. He's very well-prepared, and he's very good at this. He knows the issue like I can't. I'm a politician, I've done as much studying as I can on this issue, but Joe is somebody who's in the industry, who really is affected by this. Our wells, our aquifer, are vitally important to the economy, and we have to make sure we protect those. So, I'm going to let Joe have at it, and thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Let's see. First of all, I would like to thank Commissioner Nash and Oakland County Water Resource Commission, their staff, and thank the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission for allowing us to go on here this evening, and for organizing and facilitating the meeting. I'd like to thank all the citizens here today for taking time out of your busy schedule to attend this forum, to learn more about, or to further your education on this subject, for the simple fact that there is so much information here, that is impossible to teach or learn it in one or two hours. It could take days to actually learn and fully understand the process of horizontal slick water hydraulic fracturing. And again, I'm no professional at this. I am a well driller, I'm not no professional speaker, so regardless of how much I may know about things here, hopefully I can get this to flow out for you guys and educate you on this, because I'm not a professional here. The first thing I'd like to start out with here, of course, is to take notice that this presentation is about slick water horizontal hydraulic fracturing in Michigan, not just fracking, okay? Of course, my name is Joe Currie. A little bit about myself here is, of course, I've been drilling and repairing water wells since 1983, since I was 16-years-old in Oakland County. I own and operate Joe Currie Well Drilling Incorporated for 20 years. I'm a Director, of course, as was said, of District 18 and Michigan Groundwater Association. I'm certified through the National Groundwater Association, and of course, a member of the nationally accredited Water Systems Council. Okay, well, we're missing a frame there, but that's okay. Let's see. Some of the questions that I was asked before, when I did a presentation here, is, "Are you a geologist, Mr. Currie, or are you a scientist?" And my answer is no. I'm not a geologist, and I'm not a scientist. I am a well driller. But my question is the same to a geologist or a scientist, on how many wells have they drilled in Michigan's unique geology or Michigan's unconfined aquifers? And I'm sure their answer is going to be zero. I've drilled hundreds, if not thousands, of wells, water wells, in Michigan's unconfined aquifers, okay? I consider myself very knowledgeable of the water well drilling industry, the geology of Michigan, groundwater movement, groundwater contamination, and the migration of contamination through Michigan's unconfined aquifers. I would like to start out by saying that millions of people within this Great Lake basin survive their everyday life through Michigan's bountiful Great Lakes and Michigan's groundwater. I would like to remind you that White Lake Township, Waterford Township, and many other townships within this county and our state financially survive on the sales of municipal well water or groundwater to their citizens. I believe Michigan and Oakland County has irresponsibly endeavored in the gas and oil exploration of Michigan by not fully understanding the slick water, the process of slick water horizontal hydraulic fracturing, the extraction process, and the uniquely delicate geological makeup of Michigan. Oh, I don't see, oh, a couple, oh, here we go. I'm sorry. See, I'm no professional at this. First of all, let's give a little outline of what we're going to go over here today, and that is going to be a little overview of the fracking process, fracking in Michigan and the difference, some of my top concerns here, which would be water usage, contamination, the wastewater, issues with regulations with the state and federal, community impacts, what's being done in Michigan to protect us, and give you some resources to learn more. We'll start out with an overview of fracking, to give you a general idea of what's going on. I'm sure a lot of the people here kind of have an idea what fracking is, but I'm going to kind of give you a quick overview in case somebody here that doesn't know what it is. Okay, first of all, you don't see a well machine, oh, sorry. You don't see no well machine here. This is the wellhead right here. Normally, the well has been drilled. You've got a well that's been drilled vertically, then horizontally here, okay? What they're doing now is you've got a pump truck here, that's either a delivery for water, or they get a well on-site for their water consumption. This shows one truck, but you'll have 20 pump trucks there hooked together, that then mix the sand and chemicals, and of course, pump it down our well shaft here. The idea of this is to, of course, create cracks and crevices, and to actually crack the rock, the shale, down below, to, of course, release the gas. And of course, you're pumping sand in there, and this picture kind of diagram shows that, of course, the sand is going in, opening up these cracks and fractures, and allowing them to stay open to get this gas to flow a little easier, because this is an extremely tight shale, and it's hard to produce gas out of that. The rest of the process here, of course, is that, of course, your natural gas comes up, comes out, goes into your storage tanks, then goes off to the market, and the wastewater that comes up is either going into this pit, into this truck, and then trucked off to our injection wells somewhere in Michigan. Is this a good technology? It is absolutely brilliant, okay? From a driller's point of view, it's absolutely brilliant, okay? But is it safe for Michigan? Absolutely not. It may be safe technology or practice in North Dakota, or Nebraska, or somewhere else, but not in Michigan. And it's simply stated because of our unique and delicate geological makeup that we have in Michigan. Hopefully, by the end of this here, I can help you better understand this here today. Okay, what we have here is, what we have in Michigan are mainly two shale plays that we deal with, and what I'd like to go through is some of the extreme differences here. First of all, our two shale plays that we have in Michigan that we've been drilling in for many, many years is called our Antrim Shale up here. The one that we're looking at now that carries this tight shale gas is called the Collingswood Shale Play, okay? Some of the differences here that I'll point out. First of all, the Antrim Shale has been drilled in since 1950, okay? The regulators, our DEQ, everybody likes to say that we've been doing it for 60 years and got 12,000 wells, okay? Which is true. They've been doing that for many years. Over here today, the Collingswood Shale that we've been drilled, the first well was drilled in 2010. That's only three years ago, and there's only been 12 wells drilled horizontally fractured in Michigan in that shale play, okay? Some of the differences here. The Antrim Shale that we drilled always was 1,200 to 2,000-foot deep. Our Collingswood Shale is 12,000 feet deep, and has a vertical of 12,000 feet. That's going to be almost like two miles, two miles down, two miles across. That's a big, big difference than just 2,000-foot down, okay? That's one big difference. Another difference here, the Antrim Shale wells, they were all 100% vertically drilled. That means straight up and down vertically drilled, there was no horizontal drills, wells drilled before this, okay, in Michigan. Of course, the Collingswood Shale, shale play that we have down there, is all horizontal fractured wells that go into that. Of course, in the Antrim Shale, they use what's called gel for fracking, because they like to say that we've been fracking for 60 years. Well, in this type of frac in the Antrim Shale, they have, but it's been gel, it's been air, foam, and clean water. That's the type of fracking that they've been doing for 60 years. The difference here today is, being that this is so deep, it's what's called slick water, okay? And I will get into that and explain to you what the slick water part of that is. That's a huge difference from yesterday to today's. Yesterday's wells would destroy 5,000 to 10,000 gallons of fresh water, okay? Which is like a minimal amount. Today's wells destroy 20 to 30 million gallons of fresh water. And I say destroy, because when they use that 5,000 and 10,000, or there's 20 to 30 million gallons of fresh water, this water never goes back into our hydraulic system again. It is chemicalized, and it can't be remediated again. It's gone forever. It is removed from our hydraulic cycle forever. The old style, we had very few chemicals that were used in the Antrim Shale, and I'll be able to explain to you that here a little bit, on why it was just a few chemicals, and as far as the Collingswoods go, thousands of pounds of dry and wet chemicals have to go into that fluid mix to make that possible. I'll get into that a little bit better here for you, too. Another big one here for the Antrim Shale, for the last 60 years, on the 12,000 wells that they've done in Michigan, and said that they've done so good on that, they've all been EPA regulated. That's a big, that's a big thing to take notice to right there. They've all been EPA regulated. I'll get in more into that for you, too. And of course, in the Collingswood Shale, as of 2005, all this stuff that's been done here, they are exempt from key EPA regulations. I'll be able to go into that a little bit more for you in depth, too. Of course, the Antrim Shale, our wastewater was always considered Class II wastewater, would be injected into our Class II wastewater wells that we have in Michigan, okay? The problem here is, is that even our Collingswood Shale play that's down two miles into the earth is also classified as a Class II wastewater, and has possible radioactivity material in it, okay? Okay, moving on. Couple of things here. I want to explain, it's really important for me to get this point across to you guys here today, into the newspapers, or anybody else that's here, from government, local government, health departments, that this is something that's different. I have to really stress that this is different than what was done before. And for two reasons. You'll hear people say there's unconventional drilling, conventional drilling, and then there's what's called unconventional natural gas extraction, and conventional gas extraction. What I want to point out here, first of all, is where this gas is. The conventional way that we used to get our gas and oil was you would drill a straight vertical well down, you either hit there, or you miss there. You get into a pocket of gas, or a pocket of oil, okay? So, you drill here, you get it, you drill there, you don't get it, that sort of thing. When you're uncon, whoops, boy, my bad again. The unconventional drilling, the gas is everywhere, okay? So, when you have a shale play down there, it's not just in a pocket, it's everywhere down there, and it's in a thin layer of shale. Again, it's everywhere. So, that's why when they go down, they're going to take this and go horizontally into there, so that they get more contact with their casing for the production zone here. And I'll be able to go into that here again with you in a little bit. So, there are the two different ways that this gas is stored, gas and oil, in our earth, in pockets, or in that deep shale, okay? So, of course, the conventional drilling is vertical wells that go down, it's just that simple. The unconventional drilling is the hydro fracturing and the horizontal four holes, okay? Oh, let's see. Why is this gas shale development unconventional? The answer is because of the development of these four technologies. And I would have to tell you, it would be technically and financially inadvisable for an operator to try to produce gas from an unconventional source, like the Marcellus Shale out east, or the Collingswood in Michigan, if the operator did not recently develop and acquire four recent technologies and combine them. So, let's go over a couple of these, these four new technologies that had to come into play for horizontal slick water hydraulic fracturing to be a success. First one is the horizontal drilling. It's needed to access a thin-layered shale with long laterals. The first horizontal well drilled was in the Burnett Shale in Texas. That was in 1991. That was the first horizontal well ever drilled. In 2003, the first horizontal hydraulically fractured of the Marcellus Shale, which is out east, Pennsylvania, New York, that sort of thing, was 2003. That was the first one. That wasn't 60 years ago that we've been doing that. The first horizontal hydraulically fractured well in Michigan was 2010. So, we haven't had this going on for 60 years. And we don't have 12,000 wells. We have 12 that they've drilled horizontally. Horizontal drilling is needed to access a thin layer to allow more production and contact, casing contact. Vertical drilling is not economically reasonable due to less production casing contact. And what that means is, this picture just sort of shows a little bit, but if you had another well here that went straight down, and of course, this says Marcellus Shale, and this is from out east here, but I'm using it as example here. And if you had a well that went straight down right here, and went through that shale play right there, that shale play in Michigan, Collingswood, is like 40 to 80-foot thick. So, if you drill a well that goes straight down through that right there, you've only got 40 to 80 feet of production casing touching that zone that you're going to get gas from. That's kind of, after drilling two miles down, and only getting 80 feet of production zone there, isn't economically feasible. It's not economically worth it for them to do that. So, what do they do? The technology is to get down into that shale, and drill two miles into that shale. Of course, if you drill two miles in a lateral zone right there, you're going to have two miles of production casing to be able to retrieve that gas, okay? And that's why they need horizontal drilling, and that's why that was developed, to be able to get the gas out of these small, tight shale plays throughout our country. The second technology that had to be developed for this to be possible, is of course, high frac fluid volumes, needed to stimulate gas release from many existing fractures. And of course, this was developed in 2002, first time that this was used, not 60 years ago. The unconventional method needs to be able to have enough liquids to travel through up to four miles of piping, and then to fill all cracks and crevices for two-mile, for a two-mile lateral run while carrying thousands of pounds of chemicals. Meaning, this is a picture right here that shows the casing in a lateral drill, and of course, they have a perforating gun that perforates this casing, and then of course, with our fracking, the chemicals, and the pressure that they use, they create all these cracks and crevices and sort of thing, and the fractures that are going on. You need a lot of water, first of all, for the high-frac volumes, you need a lot of water to be able to fill four miles of pipe, four miles of six-inch pipe, unlike 1,200 feet, or 12,000 feet, okay? I'm sorry, 1,200 feet of casing versus four miles of casing. Next thing is, all these cracks and crevices that you see right here, they also have to be filled with that fluid. So, when you've got two miles of lateral casing, and you're hydro fracturing out each side, every 17 feet, or every so many feet there, and you have to fill these cracks and crevices with that fluid, that takes a huge amount of water to do that, while you're intersecting with natural cracks and crevices that also take that fluid. So, that's one of the reasons why you need these high-frac volumes of fluid here, to fill all that. Okay, number three, the third thing was slick water. Needed to control the amount of power needed to pump large volumes of frac fluid at high pressures quickly, over long distance, through small diameter casing. This was developed in 1996, the first slick water fractured fluid was first introduced, okay? In the past, Antrim Shale drilling did not require the water volume or the many chemicals used today, for the simple fact that they're shallower in depth. Their chemicals would exist of gelling agents, scale inhibitors, pH-adjusting agents, iron control, and biocides. Today's deep horizontal well uses huge amounts of water and large amounts of chemicals, diesel fuels, and such, to reduce friction, okay? Example I'd like to give to a person here is like a garden hose. You hook a garden hose up to your faucet, and then you stretch out your 100-foot hose, you're not going to have the same amount of pressure at this end of the hose where you turn it on as you do at the end of that hose, because of friction loss here. So, when you have four miles of garden hose, where are you going to get out the other end of it? Probably nothing, you see? So, that's why they have to change and alter the chemical makeup of this water by making it what we call slick water. A lot of times, they add like a diesel fuel to it, something to make it frictionless, okay? And by doing this, and forever changing the chemical makeup of water, will assure that this water can never be H2O again, as it is removed from our aquifers and our earth's hydraulic cycle forever. Okay, this picture shows that the Antrim Shale wells, what we used to do a long time, or years ago, that the regulators would like to tout about here, is that they would use maybe a maximum of 50,000 gallons of water. Today's wells and horizontal fractures are using 21 million-plus gallons of water for one fracking operation. The chemicals, they didn't need the chemicals. It was 2,000-foot deep, it's a vertical drill, they don't lose their friction, they don't have to change the chemical makeup of that water to make it slick water, until you end up getting to a four-mile, six-inch piece of pipe, now you've lost your, now you've got friction, and you need to make that slick water. That's where they'll end up with thousands of gallons of chemicals and to create that slick water. Oh, the other technology, the fourth technology that had to be developed for this to be possible, of course, is the use of multi-well pads, and it's needed to access as much of the gas inventory as possible under constraints of leasing and capital. The first multi-well pad use was in 2007, and it's what they call cluster drilling. First time they've ever done that, 2007. Again, not 60 years ago. Conventional wells are hit and miss. So, when you go through the hassle to clear an area, to set up shop for a large industrial scale activity, like what they do today, why just drill one well? They drill one well down, they hit into that shale, they drill, and they go two miles that way. Drill another one down next to that, go two miles that way. Move 17 feet forward, drill down, another one going that way, another one going that way, and they continue to do that until they have economically have gotten enough out of the pad to then move on to the next one, okay? So, the use of these technologies for unconventional gas exploration is relatively a new enterprise, less than 12-years-old. So, now we're all, now we're all on the same page. We have a general knowledge of what the new technology is, and the difference of yesterday's fracking into today's slick water horizontal hydraulic fracturing. Okay, and then we get to what I like to call half-truths and myths. These are some of the things that you will, that you may hear in the newspapers, from our state reps, your local reps, DEQ regulators, Office of Oil and Gas and Mineral Division, our governors, our chairmen, and many other members of the Michigan Energy and Technology Committee. You'll hear them say these things, that fracking has not, has been done for over 60 years, it only uses 5 to 8 million gallons of fresh water, and I'm going to go through each one of these individually for you here. So, the truth is that the first slick water horizontal hydraulic fracturing deep shale well in Michigan was the pioneer well drilled in Mesaki County in 2010, and it should not be confused with conventional fracking, foam, or gel, okay? The next one, only uses 5 to 8 million gallons of fresh water, okay? These are numbers that were used in other states drilling, like the Marcellus Shale and the Burnett Shale, okay? Our gas-bearing shale lies three to five times deeper, and is requiring 5 to 10 times more water volume destruction. The wells in Michigan have been known to destroy 21 to 35 million gallons of fresh underground aquifer water for one initial fracking operation. Oh, the third one here is that they like to say that fracking does not contaminate groundwater. This is huge. The statement of fracking does not contaminate groundwater depends on how we look at it, and are we looking at the procedure or the process, okay? And I'm going to explain that to you here in a little bit more in-depth here also, and too. The fourth one here is that Michigan has the best regulatory, best regulations in the country. I'll also cover that in the next few frames, and then, of course, they say the other half-truth that I like to explain to people, drilling companies say that they're not fracking. They're not lying, but it's half-truth. An example of this is Waterford Township, and I'll explain to you that. The actual drilling company that you enter into a lease with drills the bore hole, sets the casing, cements the casing, tears down the rig, and goes home. So, when Waterford Township entered into the lease, I went to the township meeting there, and the supervisor had assured us all that in the contract that they are not fracking, they said they're not fracking, it was in the lease statement, this and that. What I had to point out to them, and I did at that time, is that they're not lying. This is the operation, this is the extraction crew, and it's an LLC company, a lot of times a spin-off of the drilling company, okay? When the drilling company knocks on the door, says, "We're not fracking," they're not lying. They don't. They drill the casing, they set it, they go home. It's the extraction crew that comes in and does the fracking, uses the groundwater, uses the chemicals, and that sort of thing. So, it's just a little bit of a twisted, you know, half-truth-type thing there. And this, of course, is where the undisclosed chemicals are used, large volumes of water rapidly removed from our groundwater surfaces and aquifers. As you can see, the wellhead right now is here. There's no well drilling machine here, the machine's been tore down and gone. This is the extraction crew. This is what it looks like on a fracking operation. Might as well explain to you a little bit. All these trucks that you see lined up right here are all pump trucks, semi-trucks with huge pumps on the back of them. And then they're all hooked together to one manifold, and then that manifold's hooked to the top of this well, and that's, all them pump trucks is what, of course, you know, send the high-pressure fluids, they mix the sand, the chemicals, and all that. These trucks in the back, these are your chemicals. These trucks over here are your sand, okay? It all gets pumped down. Huge operation here. This isn't like the Antrim Shale drilling that we've done for 60 years. That's small industry. This is large industry, huge. There's another one. The well itself, right in the middle. You don't see no rig here, this is the extraction crew. These are the people, this is the ones that are doing the harm. That's where it comes in at. Okay, moving along, okay. The fracking process. You might have heard the industry and the DEQ talking points, that they have been, never been a case of water contamination from fracking. Well, that depends on how you look at the process of fracking. They are narrowly talking about the actual crack- They are narrowly talking about the actual cracking of the rock, but fracturing, but fracking is much more than that, it is the whole process that includes everything from mining from frac sand to the transportation of chemicals, to the disposal, disposing of the toxic wastewater and leaking methane. Because you can't crack rock or hydraulically fracture deep shale without this whole industrial process, you can't do none of this without this whole process, so. When they say that we're just frack- or that we're not fracking, they're not talking about the whole entire process. Uh, let's see, a Duke University, I'll throw this in here for you, a Duke University study published in Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences in two thousand and eleven, examined methane in groundwater in Pennsylvania and New York states overlying the Marcella Shale and the Utica Shales. It determined that groundwater tended to contain much higher concentrations of methane near fracking wells. With potential explosion hazards, the methane isotopic signatures and their geochemical indicators were consistent with its, uh, with it originating from the frac deep shale formations rather than any other source. Complaints for, from a few residents on water quality in the, in a developed natural gas field prompted the EPA groundwater investigation in Wyoming. The EPA reported detections of methane and other chemicals in private water wells. In Pavilion, Wyoming, the EPA also discovered traces of methane and foaming agents in several water wells near, near gas rigs. Contamination migration, this picture shows where the actual act of fracking of the rock and the intersection with pre-existing cracks and crevices and fault lines, uh, happen, okay? While you may sometimes hear the actual act of fracking is not the immediate cause of groundwater contamination and that it, it is in the whole process. Don't get me wrong, the cracking of the rock carries risks with its, with it as well. Including the uncontrollable distance for which they travel, intersection of natural fractures, crevices, and fault lines which create a vehicle for which can speed the migration of, the migration process of chemicals and methane from twenty to ten to even as little as five years. What I wanna point out here, this is a picture right here, of course, this is your well, this is your lateral drill, okay? What this picture's showing is that this line right here is what's called a pre-existing fault line, okay? And when you drill this, this, uh, this horizontal well right here, this well stops right here, but they could continue on, and you've crossed that pre-existing, uh, fault line right there, that's why I say you enter, when you frac and crack through the ground like that, you can, uh, uh, intersect with natural, uh, cracks out of there, fault lines, that sort of thing. This, uh, example really shows it well, because this pre-existing fault line is going through the shale, the gas-bearing formation here, it goes through what's called an aquaclude impermeable layer, which really doesn't exist in Michigan, and it's going through that to our deep aquifer. So when a person goes through this and cuts through that accidentally and you don't know when you're going through it, you're, you're actually intersecting and these can run for thousands of feet and go up into our deep, uh, our deep aquifers or even up to our shallower aquifers, okay? But that's how it happens and that's where we're talking about, these chemicals can intersect with these, with the, uh, natural stuff that's in our earth, and it goes everywhere. It's uncontrollable. Industry DEQ, uh, that claim fracking has never contaminated groundwater, there are thousands of documented cases of this process of slick water horizontal hydraulic fracturing out there, there's too many to list. I can't sit here and just rattle off how many that there are, there's way too many to list, but I'm gonna give you guys some info- information on where you can go to see a list of these harms. There's thousands, a list, list of harmed, uh, people, thousands of them, uh, and I will show you those, uh, websites here in a minute here, it says, but, uh, but of course, you know, it is false. When looked at as a process, fracking has indeed contaminated water in every state that has allowed this process to go on. So it's not just the actual act of fracking, it's in the whole process, and you can't do fracking without that process. Okay, this is a good one here, fracking in Michigan. Uh, now, let's take a look at the, at fracking here in Michigan. Uh, this is from the DEQ, and the red dots show permitted wells in our state, and as you can see, as of last month, there are fifty-three permitted wells, twelve drilled, seven pending, two failed, and two abandoned. What I'd like to point out here, that you got twelve wells drilled, these are the slick water horizontal hydraulic fracturing wells in Michigan, twelve, okay? It's not been done for sixty years. Uh, what I'm no- what, what I like about this, uh, picture right here is that you got twelve drilled wells, two failed, and two abandoned, okay? The two wells that failed had leaky cup links, gas coming out, for whatever reason, they failed, okay? The other thing is you had two wells that were abandoned, the two wells that are abandoned right there, them wells were drilled, they used the water, they used the chemicals, they pumped it all down in there, for whatever reason, i- it's not an exact science, I drill wells, you can plug off the water vein, just like you can plug off that gas vein in that shale play down there, by sand, too much sand, however they drilled, something went wrong, but they abandoned those two wells. Still use the chemicals, still use the water. What I wanna point out here is of twelve wells drilled in Michigan so far, you've got four that have been aborted or failed, okay? What kind of, uh, what kind of a failure rate is that? Yeah, I think that's like a third, isn't it, a third of those wells? Now, this is the thing, they're proposing to do fifteen-hundred of these wells in Michigan. What kind of a failure rate are we looking at here? That's huge. These are some pictures here, uh, 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 that are some wells that are in Michigan here right now that were sent to me, uh, by a good friend of mine and stuff, and so I have a few good pictures to show. Of course, state pioneer well in Mesaki County, Michigan. The ma- the biggest thing on this picture right here that I'd like to show is, you see it shows that you have a mud pit here, your freshwater reserve pit here. Michigan likes to tout that we have, you know, some of the best, uh, regulations and, and, uh, they like to say that our, that our wastewater, our produced water and all that is stored in steel containers and then hauled off the job site here, okay? That's just one little point to that, that's a good thing, we do need that, uh, in steel containers. But I think what people are missing here, and I haven't brought this up, and this is the first time I've brought it up here, and I think it's probably gonna go a lot further than this, is that mud pit that we're seeing right here, I do the same thing, when I drill a water well and stuff, I have a mud pit here, and as I'm drilling down, my cuttings and stuff are going into this water tub, I'm pulling out my cuttings, and I'm recirculating my fluid. Whatever I happen to be drilling through right there is coming up into my mud pit. If I happen to be drilling through radioactive mater- radioactive material, that radioactive material is gonna be in my mud pit, okay? It's already known that these deep shales carry radioactive material, okay? That's something that Michigan hasn't been testing for, and when they say that our, our, our flowback water, our produced water, our wastewater and all that is in the steel containers, this someday, by the time I get done, needs to be in a steel container also, 'cause this is something that they're missing, and that mud pit right there is their waste from drilling. And when you drill down two, two miles and then two miles through that shale play that has, uh, other natural chemicals, a natural bearing formation chemicals that are down there that are bad for ya, and, uh, uh, the, uh, possibility of the, uh, radiation in there, it shouldn't be just stored in an open pit with a liner right there that's probably thinner than what I cover my darn trucks with at nighttime. So that's a big one there. These are in Michigan, of course, and, of course, uh, here's another one, that's in Calcasas, of course, you see a lot of chemicals, drilling fluids, drilling compounds here, just loosely stored, covered or whatnot, you can see in the background some water on the ground here and all that, and, of course, it's huge operation here. This is nothing like what's been done in the Antrim Shale, totally different. Another one in Calcasas, this well's been done for months and they still got stuff sitting out there, chemicals, chemical, uh, empty, full, who knows, unprotected, still out there on the site. There's a, uh, another picture in Calcasas, this is where a lot of this has been going on, this is where it's starting at, it's up in Calcasas, Mansalona, up in the upper or, or lower, upper, lower peninsula up there. This is their freshwater holding tank, not a swimming pool. This isn't how much water they use for the fracking operation either, this is specifically for the drilling that I just talked about, just for drilling the hole, okay? Another picture, and, of course, in Michigan, and obviously, huge, huge operation, and, of course, you've got, uh, looks like a farm field here and that sort of thing, nice thing to look at. Another picture here, just a truck on gravel, and, of course, I, I believe that this one right here is from somebody's darn near their doorstep in Gladwin County, and I don't wanna say their names and all that stuff, but that's right off of their darn near their doorstep, and they have nothing they can say about this thing being here. And again, huge operation there. I drove by today, I was out in, uh, on, uh, General Motors Road out in the Milford area, me and my helper were going to lunch, I passed by some of the gas and oil or some oil-producing wells that they have at Camp Dearborn, I don't know if anybody's familiar with that. I drove by there and I was like, "Did you smell that?" To my nephew, he's like, "No, no, what?" Turned the truck around, went right back over there, rolled my window down, and you could not believe the smell, and that was oil wells that were pumping, another truck was there unloading things, this and that, but the smell in the air was unbelievable. I look across the street and I told him, "Can you imagine living in that house right there? You, if you had a headache, what are you gonna blame that on?" I couldn't believe it, I went to the, uh, went to have lunch and I still smelled like that gas well or that oil well from just being there, it's huge. Okay, let's go to some of my top concerns here. I'm getting ahead of myself here. My top concerns, of course, regulatory oversights, water usage, water contamination, the wastewater, community impacts from truck traffics to earthquakes, and, of course, climate change. First of all, let's go with some of the federal exemptions, federal oversights, that sort of thing. The oil and gas industry is exempt from many aspects and key provisions of seven major federal environmental laws. And when I say this, I say many aspects of the key provisions, because I've been caught up on this before where people say, "Well, they're not one-hundred percent exempt from the Safe Water Drinking Act, Clean Water Act, and these other acts," and they're not, they're not one-hundred percent exempt, but they are exempt from many aspects and, of course, the key aspects that protect us, okay? Uh, so, allowing practices that would otherwise, so being exempt from these environmental laws is allowing practices that would otherwise be illegal. Millions of lobbying dollars paid to create what's called the Halliburton loophole, uh, and essentially ties the EPA's hands from governing some of the basic laws that protect people and the environment. Go over a couple of those for you real quick, just to give you a little example of what they are. Safe Water Drinking Act, that excludes the hydraulic fracturing from underground chemical injection regulations, so they don't have to, uh, 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 expose what kind of chemicals that they're using, that sort of thing, they're exempt from that, that's the, uh, the one catch on the Safe Water Drinking Act. Clean Water Act exempts fracking materials from being considered pollutants, which would establish the basic structure for regulating discharges of pollutions, uh, pollutants into the waters of the United States. Clean Air Act exempts wells from requiring to cluster small sources of major, of pollution as a major source. What that means, that picture I just showed you with all those trucks and all those, uh, diesel engines running and all that stuff, they're not considered a major source, it is being, they're, 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 they should be considered a major source because of all that combined together, clustered together, uh, well, they're exempt from that, okay? So they don't have to be, uh, a, a pollution of a major source, they are just like a semi-truck going down the road. Uh, the next one, Superfund Law, basically exempts them from responsibility cost of cleanups. The National Environmental Policy Act exempts some types of oil and gas wells expansions from environmental impact statement processes, and that's, that's very important, to not have a environmental impact statement, uh, before you, uh, do this gas and oil exploration in Oakland County, it's huge, that's an absolute must. Uh, Resource Conservation and Recovery Act exempts any solid waste brought to the surface or produced during removal. Toxic release inventory, of course, is our community right to know, it exempts the gas and oil industry from reporting the release of toxic materials, uh, and, of course, they spent millions, uh, and, and millions of dollars in lobbying to get this loophole. Uh, the oil and gas, the oil and natural gas companies argue that the states can do a better job regulating. Michigan's right, so let's take a look at Michigan's regulations here and how that they're doing here and stuff, okay? Uh, wi- with an estimate of eighteen thousand active wells, area geologists within the Office of, of Oil, Gas, and Minerals would have to visit over three wells per day to observe each active well site one time per year. Should go back up here and stuff, the oil, this OOGM is the Office of Oil and Gas and Mineral, their staff is fifty, fifty-five people wide, their area geologists are twenty-two people, that's where I'm getting my numbers, you got twenty-two people to regulate and monitor these eighteen thousand wells, active wells, that we have currently right now, not including the ones that were, uh, projected to drill. Uh, keep it in mind that today's large-scale slick water horizontal fracturing operations run twenty-four hours a day, while regulators are tied to eight-hour days, which only allow regulation, regulators to regulate or monitor a third of the time, and mainly rely on industry reporting. The DEQ clearly does not have adequate staff to oversee and regulate established mining activities or contaminational events. The Office of Oil, Gas, and Mineral is funded by royalties. The chief of the Off- Office of Oil and Gas and Minerals recently made a public statement that the fee that's charged for permits is only three hundred dollars, and that that does not even cover half of the cost of the filing fees needed, which is okay, he says, because our intentions are recouping from royalties, and if that doesn't create a conflict of interest, okay? Again, sole funding of the Office of Oil and Gas and Mineral, our DEQ's division of the Oil Office, Oil, Gas, and Mineral, is from oil and gas industry that it regulates, it's like having the fox watch the chicken coop. Understand that the only industry in this country that is, that, that is funded by the industry that it regulates, okay? Uh, that encourages, uh, in- interest in lack of oversight, it encourages unfair and biased environmental protection, it encourages willingness to override practical water withdrawal limits, okay? An example of this, uh, an example of our oversights and, you know, under, uh, under manned activities here. Citizens Watch Dogs have been a key to discovering that some forty thousand gallons of toxic wastewater from unconventional fracking was being spread on roads as brine for dust control in northern Michigan, Calcasas. And also discovered that there was incorrect water withdrawal wells drilled within their containment and spill zones, uh, utilizing illegal casing and having insufficient or no grouting of the casing, thus pointing out a severe lack of oversight demonstrated by our DEQ's Office of Oil and Gas and Mineral Division while also demonstrating oil and gas companies deceptive ways. Another example, uh, uh, was, uh, I had talked to an oil, uh, talked to a DEQ regulator here maybe a month or so ago, and he gave me this bit of information here, and he, uh, when it was turned in about this casing and all that being utilized, the wrong casing at this, at this one drilling site, uh, of course, the DEQ went out there, he visited it, and it was approached by, uh, of course, the DEQ Waterwell Regulatory Division, uh, went out to the, to the, to the site there, and they were told to leave the property, uh, that their division does not regulate our water withdrawal wells and any recommendations should be written and across, from across your desk. And this is our DEQ's Waterwell Division that knows everything about the water well drilling in Michigan, what needs to be utilized, the casings, and everything about it, they, they are educated on it, that sort of thing, and they were actually run off the job site because oil and gas industry regulates their own, okay? Uh, some other me- key, uh, major key regulations that Michigan is lacking, okay, and that many other states are enforcing, uh, are, first of all, baseline testing before drilling begins, uh, disclosure of all chemicals before drilling begins, and the testing of radioactive materials such as radon-226 before drilling begins, and more importantly, in the drilling fluid, the flowback and the produced toxic, uh, wastewater. And, of course, the first step to better regulating is more importantly acknowledging the difference, and then taking steps to better protect our groundwater and our environment. Uh, that's key. If our, if our, if our, um, our regulators and people keep seeing this as the same thing that's been done in the past, nothing's gonna get better here, things are gonna get worse. They need to, they need to relook their regulations, it's a totally different ballgame, and they need to, uh, they need to, uh, upgrade their regulations to protect us. Okay, moving on, water usage. Uh, waters, it, the first one here, water is not used, it is destroyed and permanently removed from our water cycle. Regulate- regulators like to use this example, uh, that the amount of water used in fracking operation is equal to the amount of water used to irrigate an acre of corn or some frivolous comparison like that. What I would like to point out to you and make very clear is that when you use millions of gallons of the aquifer for farming, crop, crops, heat treating plants, and even bottled water companies, this water never leaves our hydraulic cycle, the same water's been reused for thousands of years. The difference in slick water horizontal hydraulic fracturing is this The difference in slick water horizontal hydraulic fracturing is this process does not use the water, it destroys it, starting with the first 20 to 30 million gallons of freshwater used in each fracking event. So you cannot compare this with anything else, because it destroys the water, it doesn't use it. The next one is exempt from all water withdrawal rules in Michigan. Every other industry in Michigan has to follow all of Michigan's water withdrawal rules, such as Michigan's Preservation Act, Great Lakes Compacts, and our own state's water withdrawal assessment tool. The gas and oil companies are either exempt from many key aspects, or are 100% exempt from these rules in Michigan. Okay, here in Michigan, the third one, here in Michigan, we are using four times the national average, uh, with wells documenting destroying over 20, 20 million gallons of our freshwater. Why are we using four times the national average? Our wells are three to four times deeper, that's simple. The new, the news of this kind of water destruction on such a huge scale per fracking well has been touted by the industry throughout the country, and claiming to hold a record for the most water ever used on a horizontal hydraulic fracked well in the country, Michigan. And has actually been reported in a Texas newspaper, that's how big that information is, that, that they use that much on one fracking operation, and Michigan's holding that record. That's not very good. Uh, the next one, 13 wells being proposed are permitted to destroy 300 million gallons of Michigan's freshwater. It is important to look at the number of, on applications, recently filed by a Cana Drilling Company for five additional wells on one pad in the Oliver Township, Calcasas County. This one pad proposes to use 132,300,000 gallons of water. This is more water from a single watershed for a single well pad than all 12,000 Antrim wells, human-fully used over 60 years of Antrim drilling. Hard to believe. Let's look at this, an average number of gallons used to complete an Antrim shale well is 10,000 gallons per well. Multiply 10,000 by the 12,000 that they say they've got out there in 60 years, the result is 120 million gallons of water. That's 12.3 million gallons less than the estimated water withdrawal for the next new five wells on just one pad. So, those five wells are gonna surpass 60 years of drilling exploration in Michigan with just the use of those five wells. That's how huge amount of water that this is, and how different that this is. Uh, and of course, this is not an exception, in Michigan, this is the norm, because it's five times deeper than everywhere else in this country, that is two miles down. The other ones are 6,000 feet down, this is two miles, twice as deep, five times as deep in, in other areas. Okay, which brings me to this, what do we do with all this wastewater? All that wastewater comes back, what do we do with all that? Hang on to that thought for one minute. Next slide here, water contamination, this is a picture of Michigan's unique geological makeup. It is a picture that illustrates Michigan's, uh, geological makeup is unlike anywhere else in this country. Notice the depressed bowl shapes, so-called confining layers. Okay, in Michigan, we have what's these bowl shapes, and these are depressed from the glaciers from years ago, okay? Glaciers come through, depress what we have so-called confining layers. In Michigan, there's no such thing as a confining layer. You may have confining layers, other places in this country that truly are confining layers, Michigan doesn't have that. One of the things I like about this, uh, this graph right here, this picture here, is that it shows that all this is separated right here, and it's all depressed and fractured and all that stuff here. And of course, this right here shows, here's sea level. Our wells in the Antrim Shale right now are, are 2,000 feet deep, so you go down 2,000 feet, you're into this right here, okay? This is all highly fractured shale, and what we wanna notice here is that you see it comes out right here above sea level, okay? And this is in the northwest of our state, this is in the southeast part of our state, again, above sea level. This is, these are like outcrops, so in other words, this, this shale play that outcrops, uh, in Traverse City area, and this one down below Detroit, that's our whole state right here, it's, 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 it's all connected, it outcrops right here, and it actually, I have pictures that will show, this Antrim Shale right here, this was sent to me by a fellow here in Milford, and this picture right here shows, that's our Antrim Shale, that is supposedly, and that's what it looks like, 2,000 feet down into the center of our earth, it dips down, just like that. As you can see, the dipping is starting to happen right here. So, this is our shale play, that's the Antrim Shale that we're talking about, and look how, uh, fractured it is. An example I like to give to people is that this, they say that it is a confining layer, not a confining layer, it's like a deck of cards right here. You take a deck of cards, you throw them out on the table right there, you pick one card up and try to put water through it, you can't put it through it, but you lay them all down, and in between each of them, there's, there's room, there's cracks, there's crevices, that's, that's what you have here, it's not a confining layer. Nice picture, that really, that really shows it right there. There's also been documentation, uh, of issues of blowholes at a 300 feet below the surface of Lake Michigan, actually venting chemicals and trace elements used in gas and oil exploration in Michigan from the Antrim Shale. That's been a proven fact, they actually have chemicals and elements that have come out and vented near Traverse City, that they, that they had correlated with the gas and oil drilling and, and that sort of thing. Uh, let's see, okay, now we get to my, uh, to the disposal wells. What do we do with all that wastewater? Water used for fracking is permanently removed from our water cycle, it is no longer water, but a mixture of toxic chemicals like lead, benzene, many others, and also the naturally-present radioactive and many other harmful materials that exist deep underground and comes back with, with this toxic wastewater. Which brings me to my next point, what do we do with all this wastewater? Michigan's answer, deep well injections, out of sight, out of mind. While this vector of the fracking process is usually an afterthought, uh, this portion of the fracking process also carries the highest potential of both small, large, and grand scale, scale contaminational risks. The projected amount of chemically altered, uh, in many, and, and many times radioactive toxic wastewater produced is absolutely staggering. The knockout is that Michigan's DEQ regulators recognize as extremely toxic and extremely different slick water horizontal waste, or deep shale waste, as the same salty brine that was produced from our Antrim Shales, allowing this wastewater to be underclassified and injected into our Type II shallower injection wells, which will eventually contaminate Michigan's unique commodity of natural brine located under Michigan that has the potential of saving many townships and the state millions of dollars by the way of salt water used on our roads and highways for ice and snow control. I don't know if anybody knows that, but below Michigan here, we have trapped seawater from them glaciers that came through millions of years ago, trapped seawater that has salt in it that is four times stronger than the salt water in our oceans right now. That's a huge commodity that Michigan uniquely possesses here. And instead of spreading salt on our roads, storing the salt, big salt bench storing it, contaminating groundwater and all that, you could simply drill a well to that salt water, pull it out, fill trucks, spray it on the road, same thing you do with spreading salt, saves millions of dollars, that's free down there. But that commodity's gonna get wrecked, if we keep considering this as a Class II injection well, and we keep putting the chemicals from the, from the deep shale drilling into our, uh, uh, Class II injection wells, we're gonna wreck that commodity there. One of these days, somebody's gonna test it, it's gonna have chemicals in it, no longer can we use that on our roads again. Uh, let's see, not to mention Michigan's geological makeup cannot contain the millions and millions of gallons of injected toxic chemical-laden wastewater without the eventual and definite migrating to the surface of our Great Lakes and underground water supplies. Michigan, Pennsylvania has five injection wells that currently accept such wastewater. With all that exploration in Pennsylvania, only five injection wells, Pennsylvania operators have increasingly looked to disposal wells outside of their state. Ohio accepts most of Pennsylvania's fracking industry wastes, with some 177 disposal wells within Ohio, 35 are located and ingested within the Michigan Basin, located in the northeast part of Ohio, just under Lake Erie. Which brings me to my next point, which goes hand in hand with disposal wells. Michigan runs the risk of any small earthquake, as has been experienced in Ohio, Arkansas, and just recently in Texas, to prove catastrophic in Michigan, creating conduits that will release the gases and speed the migration of chemicals to our surface and groundwaters, not to mention the upset of the cement bond of every gas and oil well in the area, further creating casing separation, coupling failures, and creating annulus fractures. That's very important, uh, because it's real, there, there's earthquakes that have happened, 800 earthquakes within a year in Arkansas before they stopped using their injection And of course, Michigan has a ton of injection wells here, one of these days, we're gonna end up being the dumping grounds of this, uh, oil and gas exploration for our energy sector here someday, if it continues. Uh, this is what I like to point out here. Uh, this is a picture of the Dallas Airport, uh, Dallas Airport. And what I wanna show you on this one here, is that one drilling company purchased all the leasing rights for this entire airport, this is what it looks like now. The red dots indicate the bottom of the boreholes, I don't know if you guys will be able to see that or not, but over here, you'll have these little red dots, that's the bottom of the borehole, the white dots are the top of the borehole, and they're all directionally drilled. You look at this picture here, you see these little red spots right here, these are the wellheads and that sort of thing, and all these lines right here that you see throughout here are all horizontal boreholes, they've just absolutely, totally, uh, drilled everywhere and every drop of gas that they could possibly get out of that shale play underneath there because they were the only ones that got the leases here. Um, uh, let's see, the fir-, and of course, the, and the yellow triangles is where the earth, is where earthquakes were recorded, these yellow triangles. This blue, uh, box right there is where their disposal well for all of this activity going on, they have their disposal wells located right here in the south part of this airport. And these little, uh, yellow spots right here from up here is where their seismic activity was recorded. The first quake was a 3.4 magnitude on the Richter scale at 11:05 PM Central Daylight Time on September 30th, 2012, a few miles southeast of the Dallas-Fort Worth International Airport. And the second came four minutes later, uh, 3.1 magnitude aftershock in the same area, according to the US Geological Survey. A day later, 10:41 PM local time, 2.1 magnitude tremor shook up the residence for the third time. The spatial and time correlations was consistent with an induced triggered source. Prior to October 31st, 2008, there have never been and no local felt earthquakes known in the Dallas and, and Tarrant Counties, which have been settled since about 1850, okay? About seven weeks before the Dallas-Fort Worth earthquakes began, injections commenced in a saltwater disposal well only a few hundred meters from the Dallas-Fort Worth epic center, according to the, to the, uh, US Geological Survey. So in other words, this place has never had an earthquake before since 1950, and then all of a sudden, as soon as they start injecting into these injection wells here, you got three or four different kind of earthquakes going on there and stuff, absolutely correlated and, and the reason why. Okay, Michigan fault lines, what does this slide show? The major fault lines, the many major fault lines that run through Michigan, okay, and suggest that we do also have the potential for earthquakes, large and small, also demonstrates the need for the reevaluation of these fault lines throughout Michigan and reestablish further setback rules and regulating distance for the drilling near them. Which means that of course, you know, that, uh, the, the exploration in Michigan's been going on for all these years, it's our vertical wells, they stay a certain amount away from some of these documented fault lines that we know are in Michigan here, and we stay away from them, it's what's called a setback from them. Now we're doing the horizontal drilling, so we could be drilling a well here and drill two miles this way here, cross them fault lines, all these fault lines need to be reevaluated, remapped, and new setbacks in, uh, in place, you know, to, uh, to further distance them from the drilling activities. Otherwise, these fault lines here create a major problem for us, they're, they're avenues to our aquifers. Uh, here's, uh, earthquake in Youngstown, Ohio, a little, a good picture of what happened Okay, let's see, community impacts. Of course, you got truck, truck traffic, you got potential negative impacts on agriculture and tourism industry, and of course, you got lights, noise from the 24-hour operation, these are some of the things that, that affect us in our community. Uh, trucks clogging up the road, competing with emergency vehicles and school buses, et cetera, uh, diesel emissions and air quality, and thousands of gallons of highly topical, toxic chemicals being trucked through our communities up and down our roads. Uh, there's also competition with farmers over water, uh, scouring of our landscapes, and I think, uh, I think we have some citizens, uh, right now, as a matter of fact, that experienced some of these impacts right here in Oakland County, uh, with the two wells being drilled in the Indian Springs Metro Parks, the roads, the lights, the 24-hour drilling, okay? And I made my way down there and took a few pictures and made my way down them roads, absolutely tore up, and Big Lake Road is never like it used to be, okay? It's big industry. Okay, the next slide here, something that, uh, this isn't really my forte, okay, is the climate, the water, and the, the water division, that's what I am, a water well driller, that's my forte here, so that's what I try to stick to, uh, but what I do know about the climate change here is that when we look at the life set, cycle of natural gas, it is actually not a bridge fuel to renewable energy, it is a bridge fuel to nowhere, okay? Uh, up to 10% of methane leaks throughout production, storage, transportation, and use, that's huge. Methane is 20 times, 22 times more potent than that of carbon dioxide. Studies show that the life cycle of natural gas has a dirtier, more harmful impact to our climate than coal, and what that means is that there's been studies that show, after 20 years of burning coal, uh, you're probably better off, although, burning, uh, natural gas, it burns clean, that's really nice, it does burn clean, better than coal, that sort of thing, but it was a process of getting that, what did we have to suffice to get that, uh, that natural gas? The, the water consumption, the chemicals, the, uh, uh, the contamination of our groundwaters, that sort of thing. Uh, after 20 years, you're better off using coal, it's got a dirtier footprint here. Okay, next one here is what can we do? Before I get into this one, I'd like to take a look around this room here, and I'd like to ask, how many health department regulators or from the DEQ are here today? Raise a hand if there's somebody here from our local health department, our DEQ, nobody here. Uh, how many state representatives do we have here today? None, thank you. If you're here, hold your hand up, we're not gonna shoot ya. How many local government representatives do we have here today? Not very, very convinced. How many, how many from Michigan's Energy and Technology Committee, uh, that are here, uh, today? I've heard a lot from you guys, you're not here. Energy and Technology Committee's been putting a lot of stuff out there, and of course, uh, a lot of misinformation, you would think that they would be here learning this today, okay? Uh, as citizens now, I'm gonna say it, you guys are more educated on this issue than our representatives, than our regulators, uh, let's see, they're not here. I think the only input that they're getting right now is the Exxon Oil commercials and the advertisers showing every night on TV, that's where they're getting their information now. Okay, we can talk to all, some of the things that we can do, definitely, talk to your local electric officials, uh, that's a big one, we have to keep, uh, keep on to them and talk to them, write them, tell them that we don't want this. Reiterate that everyone should talk to their local officials, absolutely, I'm sorry. Orangeville Township on the west side of the state, let me back up one second here. Cities and towns, what can they do? Of course, you can pass ordinances here, you can pass ordinances that govern the, the waste disposal wells that may be in your township or whatnot, you can, uh, pass ordinances to regulate their pipelines to go through your towns and cities or not, uh, you can also regulate the water and, uh, water and soil contamination, liabilities for the emergency incidents, create liabilities, make them be responsible for that. Uh, the other was the nuisance trucks, noise, lights, that sort of thing. Uh, Orangeville Township on the west side of the state just passed an ordinance zoning truck traffic, okay? That is inhibiting the fracking process and keeping their township safe. West Bloomfield currently has a one-year moratorium on fracking as they work with their staff to figure out, uh, the best ordinances for their community. So, our townships can do things, these are some of the things that they can do, uh, to put a slowdown to things there and help protect your community. Okay, some of our resources to learn more here, and that is, uh, first of all, Food and Water Watch in the back right here, Tia from Food and Water Watch has been a great help, she's very knowledgeable on this stuff, a very good coordinator for us, and, uh, I encourage you guys to either talk- you guys to either talk with Tia in the back back there, and definitely grab some of her information, take home, and that sort of thing. Let's see, of course, we have Let's Ban Fracking, where you can learn more about the statewide ballot campaign to ban fracking in the state of Michigan. I know Todd's here today, certainly talk with them, sign these petitions here, these are things that we can do. Of course, Don't Frack Michigan and Respect My Planet are great places to go for local information about fracking in Michigan. Let'sbanfracking.org, very good place to get information, okay? And to learn about what's going on here. Another one that I want to point out to you, and this is where there were thousands of cases of lung problems, neurological problems, thousands of cases of where fracking has affected the public, the process of it, whether it be the air, the water, or the chemicals in the process, thousands of incidents there. And that is on the www.pennsylvaniaallianceforcleanwaterandair. Okay, so, you know, I think maybe people can write this down, I don't have a handout for you on that right there, but I think that at the end of it, we'll put this back up so that people can write this stuff down right here. Another good one here is, back up, where it says RespectMyPlanet.org right there. That is a website that was designed for us, by us, okay? Friends of mine in the upper state of Michigan here have developed this website right here so that we can go online and look at the gas and oil exploration in Michigan. What you'll get here is every dry hole that was ever drilled, every oil well, gas injection, water disposal wells, where they are in Michigan, that sort of thing. The gas wells, every particular well in Michigan, where they're at, what they went through, you can get there. Their drilling logs, their well files, the well summaries, et cetera, abandoned, not abandoned, very good information here. And all you have to do is punch in your zip code or whatnot, and if you do it in your area over here or whatnot, you'll get all these that come up into your area, and you're going to be amazed at how much exploration's actually been done in our area here, or White Lake Township, or Watford, or wherever you may be. And you're going to be amazed at how much is actually being done there. And let's see, moving on. Okay, in closing, I'd like to say that Aldo Leopold, how are we doing on time?
Good, wound it up pretty quick.
Okay, we're getting there right now, so thanks for being patient, you guys. In closing, I'd like to say Aldo Leopold is an environmentalist and a scientist, and once said, "Our community cannot impose a groundwater ethic, but at least we can explain what is at stake." And this, ladies and gentlemen, is what is at stake. Michigan has the longest freshwater coastline of any political subdivision in the world, being bound by four of the five Great Lakes, plus Lake St. Clair, and has over 64,000 in lake ponds, lakes and ponds, where a person in this state is never more than six miles from a natural water source, or more than 85 miles from a Great Lakes shoreline. Michigan also holds 20% of the world's available fresh surface water. Our underground water veins are made up of 95% unconfined aquifers, which means underground aquifers, surface waters, and Great Lakes are connected, which means water contamination in Genesee County affects groundwater quality in Oakland County. Groundwater quality in Watford affects groundwater quality in Ferndale. Groundwater contamination in northern Michigan affects groundwater quality in southern Michigan. Eventually, water contamination in Lake Michigan also contaminates Lake Huron, which also contaminates Lake Superior, and so on. If Michigan wants to remain a vacation destination, remain pure Michigan, and enjoy revenue from this for many years to come, our citizens are going to have to band together and demand that our representatives protect our groundwater, our environment, and our communities from the atrocities experienced in other cities, towns, and states. Support a ban on fracking. I believe, I believe rushing into this type of drilling procedure that has proven atrocities and possibilities of contamination on a grand scale is irresponsible. The gas and oil-rich shale beneath Michigan has been there for millions of years, and is not going anywhere soon. So let's err on the side of caution, take time to develop ways to extract the oil and gas in a less invasive, more responsible manner, and it will then prove beneficial. I would like to also remind us that, all of us, that Vermont is the first state to ban fracking, the storage of the chemicals used, and the disposal of millions of gallons of wastewater into their injection wells within their borders. My question to our regulators, who aren't here today, is what does Vermont know that Michigan does not know? What does Vermont have that Michigan does not have? Maybe they realize that they have a limited groundwater supply. And let's see, so, on a lighter note, I would like to share with you a poem that was published in the Michigan Groundwater Association Convention booklet 45 years ago, and it was from one water well driller to another. And I find this poem ironic, that I, as a water well driller, that has provided safe drinking water for this community, and many other communities in this state for many years, and I am now sitting here tonight convincing you of the value of it. Did you ever stop to ponder while sitting all alone, when there's no one at the office door or calling on the phone? Why is it that the Geddys or the Ewing's of TV have fancy cars, homes, and land so strange to you and me? It's because they drill for black gold, that slippery, greasy crude, that makes them sometime, that makes them rich and famous, and sometimes slightly rude. But when you think of all of this, and your blood begins to boil, just remember, someday water will be more valuable than oil. Yes, most would say it's oil and gas that makes this country go, but if they stopped to think a bit, they'd know, it's just not so. Let them use it once to wash their face, or take a healthy drink, or run it in their bathtub, or better yet, their kitchen sink. See, it's really water that we need to keep us going strong, for without this priceless resource, we cannot get along. So the next time you spud some casing in or rotor in that soil, just remember, someday water will be more valuable than oil. It may not be tomorrow, but the groundwork is clearly laid for all to know the value of our important trade. So if you, so if you get discouraged over long, hard hours that you toil, just remember, someday clean, clear water will be more valuable than oil. And ladies and gentlemen, that someday is today. No matter what monetary value you put on it, sales, jobs, royalties, today, your water is more valuable than oil. Thanks for listening.
I can tell you, I learn something every time I have Joe here next to me. It's really interesting. This is a very, very good, good piece here. I really enjoyed that, that was very informative. I would like to open this up to questions. I think that, why don't we have folks step up to the microphone here? You know, try to, this is one of the reasons I'm here.
Okay. I'm Rose Wallach from Royal Oak, and you gentlemen, Joe Curry is the presenter, and Joe Nash is the sponsor of this event. You are my heroes, oh, I gotta say. But, I do have a question. And that is that you're talking about shale gas drilling. And of course, I believe, because this, this stuff is complicated, that the situation in Kalamazoo involved shale oil drilling? Is that different? Can you, is it different to you?
As far as the spill that went on in Kalamazoo?
Right.
Well, that was a pipeline that broke.
Okay.
Yep, and I believe that was tar sands. That was a tar sand, just like we've recently experienced in Arkansas.
So in other words, that's a completely different category?
It is, it is.
And what that means is, tonight, I just learned about a whole new category, that I didn't know of before, and really, they're both equally dangerous.
Absolutely.
As far as I can tell, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment on that tar sand oil stuff though, too, is that that's a completely different monster there, and I think that they should have learned from the spill in Michigan and Kalamazoo, that when they put the skimmers out there like that, you see, they're still writing the book on the cleanups and stuff, right? They don't know what's really supposed to happen here. But they put the skimmers out there and stuff, and low and behold, it all still got down the river down there, and it went down underneath all that spill containment stuff, because it was all surface stuff. They've learned now that it's gone up underneath. But still, in Arkansas, millions of gallons of this tar sand blew a big hole and blew up there, and they still did the same thing. They didn't learn nothing. All that gas, all the tar sands went underneath their skimmers, big problems.
Hello, how you guys doing? So, I came to this meeting with a lot of anticipation, I was excited, but after being here for an hour and a half, I'm very discouraged, very disappointed, because I work in the petroleum industry, I'm a petroleum engineer, and what was up on that screen is nothing but a bunch of half-truths, and it's very discouraging that you're misleading all these people. This is a great technology, it's bringing gas that we need for energy to everybody here, and I'd like everybody to think about this point. If we don't drill for oil, gas, and coal, which is our only practical energy source, how is all our environment's going to be affected when you don't have heat, you don't have a way to get around, you don't have plastics, you don't have, any of the modern things is all fueled by oil, gas, and coal. So, what was put up here is not true. I work in the energy industry, and I encourage everybody in here to do their own independent thinking and research. So with that said, I have to take my kid and put him to bed.
Excuse me, can you be specific about what's not true?
Okay.
I mean, one thing.
Resource, just one thing. Okay. So, I have several. So, one thing I want to talk about is Mr. Curry claimed that fracking fluid water is radioactive, totally false. Fracking fluid water is 90% water, 9.5% sand, 0.5% chemicals, and most of those are salts, barite salts used in cosmetics, isoprofils used in deodorants, those are the three main ones. Mr. Curry's second claim is that...
Hold on a second. If that's the case, then why is there an exception for providing the information that is actually using? How would they even seek to protect?
Well, because it's like, any patents, if you don't have a patent, you're at competition.
Also, drugs go through significant regulation. I can't imagine a drug company going to the FDA saying, okay, this works, we know it works, we're not going to tell you what's in it, because that's a trade secret. Trade secrets don't count with regulators. Trade secrets count with other people in the trade. They're, when they make a medicine, they have to tell the regulators what's in that medicine. All companies are exempted from that. So I think that is significant. You said that only 0.5% of what's put in in these fluid is chemicals. If you go to the state site that lists the chemicals used in this, significant, it uses a massive number of chemicals, a significant number of those, when it's per well, are listed as trade secrets.
Does it make it bad, though?
But then why have a trade secret? If you're keeping it from the regulators, that just doesn't make sense to me, and I don't know of any other industry where that's done. I mean, it's the only, one is oil.
Okay, my second point is that Mr. Curry claims...
5% is only 150,000 gallons of chemicals, just to say that out there for 39 million. You want to drink that water when it's polluted? Do you, just ask, you have to know, you want to drink that stuff?
Let, let's, I want to, I want to not get antagonistic here.
Mr. Curry is claiming that because we have new technology that drills horizontally, that is more dangerous than old technology. That's my point, it's safer than old technology. The second point is...
How about this?
It's new technology.
It's new technology.
Mr. Curry's point is that just because it's horizontal, means that it's going to get gas into your drinking water. Well, shale is thousands of feet below your drinking water source, and that's thousands of feet of solid rock that are impermeable to fluids, gases. That's why the oil and gas is there in the first place, it's been trapped there for millions of years. I can't think of a better seal than oil and gas has been trapped there for millions of years. Second point is, is that, third point is that...
Let's, let's let him, let's let him talk.
Okay.
Let him talk, yeah.
With the volumes of water claim, yes, those numbers are huge, but put in perspective, 20 million, the number he put up there, 20 million gallons, which I can't either confirm or deny that, that's a big number. But there's over six quadrillion gallons of water in the Great Lakes, that's six with 12 zeros.
So, if it's contaminated, nobody can use it.
And sir, the Great Lakes are historically at their lowest levels ever.
It's because it hasn't rained. Not because of oil and gas.
I didn't say it was because of oil and gas, I said that the lakes are at their historically lowest levels. There's not a lot to use. No, I mean it's used.
I just, I just encourage everybody to do all their independent research, and to think about what would happen to your life if you didn't have oil, gas, and coal.
I want to thank the gentleman for speaking up. It's good that we're having a conversation here, I wanted to have a conversation with a guest. I too encourage everybody to go find these things out. Look it up, look it up in scientific literature, look it up in reports from various areas. We saw, two years, three years ago now, in Pennsylvania, there was a wellhead blew out, it had a 75-foot column of contaminated water coming out of the ground for hours. And if this happened near one of our streams, or one of our rivers, we're the headwaters of five river systems in Oakland County, it would spread to other places, it would spread. And so, the issues surrounding accidents are significant, and we must protect our people. I mean, this is, I think, the most important lesson to take from this. Go ahead, Tia.
If I can add something real quick, them huge numbers that I put up on the board there, 20 million gallons per one fracking well, that's industry-reported information. Freedom of Information Act that we pulled out, and that is industry-reported information.
Go ahead, Tia.
So, yes, I mean, I think it is unfortunate that someone from the other side wouldn't speak tonight alongside Joe. I know, obviously, that gentleman was here, the gentleman in the back is from Energy and Depth, which is an industry group, and I wish someone would step up to represent, because I often find, as someone that works in this, you know, nonprofit world, that a lot of times they can say, make the points that I'm trying to make even better, so, you know, explaining their regulation and whatnot. But I actually have a question that was emailed to me from someone who wanted to be here but couldn't be here tonight, so I want to read it on behalf of them. So, and again, if someone from the audience maybe knows more about this, that'd be great. But, so we have heard a lot lately about more gas with less water, so that this technology is making more gas with less water. However, this person is looking at Antrim water use and average gas production per well numbers. He also has the production numbers for four different wells up in the Excelsior area. And so it appears to him that it takes 100,000 gallons of water to produce 1 billion cubic feet of gas in the Antrim Shale, which is the shallower shale. And at the same time, it's taking over 2 million gallons of water to make a billion cubic feet in the Collinwood Shale Play. So, I know this is a lot of numbers to throw out, and you might not know, but I just feel like this is something that I've also been hearing a lot, is that, you know, oh, new technologies, they're safe, they're actually producing more gas, but really, this person's going back and looking at drillers' logs, and looking at all these, you know, different, like you said, public records, and finding that this is actually not the case at all, and it's more like, you know, 20 to 1 ratio for water to gas. Have you guys done any research on this, or know anything about it?
I really haven't.
Okay.
I haven't, I can't answer that for you.
Well, maybe it'll be another half-truth that you have up on your PowerPoint one day, but, okay, no problem. But again, I think it's unfortunate that, you know, the industry and the regulators won't come and allow a fair debate, but Jim, I'd love to see you debate how fit.
That's the plan for the Brandon event next month, so I'm looking forward to that. I wanted to mention something that the gentleman from the oil industry said, that the other, gas, oil, and coal are the only, only energy sources that are effective, or I'm not sure the exact word he used. That is not even a half-truth. There's no truth there at all. Wind is now cheaper than coal for the life cycle of a coal plant. Solar is getting right there, my own Farnham Hills City Hall, we have a solar array. On a hot summer day, we have geothermal heating, so on a hot summer day, we're circulating cold air from underground, so we're really just running fans, and we're actually selling power back to the grid on a sunny day, when most people are using... power back to the grid on a sunny day, when most people are using extra energy. So potentially, potentially, everybody could be doing that. We would have distributed power, and I think that, in the long run, is gonna be the answer. If we can put a solar power on my house, that I know, even on a cloudy day, is enough to run my house and charge my batteries for the night, then on a sunny day, I'm producing power. So, if everybody did that, we would not need coal anymore. I mean, it would be a gone issue. In terms of natural gas being a bridge fuel, Joe mentioned in his piece, that it's much more reactive chemical, and in the process, this is a volatile organic compound. I don't know if you've ever heard of volatile organic compounds, they used to be in paints, they used to be in carpets, they used to be everywhere. I used to get sick building syndrome, I'm sorry, sick building syndrome from it. That new car smell is volatile organic compounds, and it's a poison. So, oil is an organic compound, it evaporates. Gas, naturally, at earth-surface temperature and pressure, is a gas, so when it leaks, it leaks. When gas or oil leaks, it pools and eventually evaporates or sinks into the ground, gas is immediately absorbed into the atmosphere. So, gas is not a good bridge, it's worse. And in the long run, if we want to build a bridge of infrastructure to support gas, so then we have a... Why would we have an infrastructure for natural, for alternative energies? So, just go ahead and build the bridge for alternative energies first, and forget the bridge for gas. That's my opinion.
Yeah. Please, go ahead. Take one comment here. Just add to that a little bit, this is a little tidbit that I learned here not too long ago, that Russia and China have surpassed America in the use of their, in development of their solar, wind energy and all that. Last year, they developed and used more energy through wind and solar than they did through coal and oil. They have now surpassed us in this. We're supposed to be the leaders in this, Russia has passed us. The other thing, too, just to add to that, this is a list of, from April 2011, United States House Representative Committee on Energy and Commerce Minority Staff Chemicals Used in Hydraulic Fracturing, that's all of it. 750 different chemicals used here, and they're not just the simple chemicals that are what were, we were just told, okay? Go ahead, please.
Well, thank you guys both for being here, and I think one thing that the oil and gas gentlemen was missing that you've hit on throughout your presentation was the water withdrawal factor, and that, I mean, and you would know this, obviously, as a well driller, the regulation that you're subject to just for drilling drinking water wells is ridiculous, and then you have these oil companies that are able to come in and not be subject to any of that. So, I have actually a couple of questions, and I don't know how many I can, maybe I can get them all in. One was with the fact, you kinda like touched on it, but with sinkholes, because as we're withdrawing all this water, and maybe somebody's getting their drinking water, you know, in Waterford, from their own private well, but the drilling maybe is taking place in Indian Springs, how, who's responsible for that? I mean, if the drinking water well isn't producing for the consumer, not even looking at like chemical contamination, but looking at sinkholes and the fact that the water usage, is there anybody that's responsible for, I guess, that aspect of it?
Well, the sinkholes are like, they're actually like a blowhole that was located 300 feet underneath Lake Michigan. That was actually a blowhole discharging, venting the chemicals that were found in there from oil and gas exploration, they've actually documented that. As far as contamination from one area to another like that, I mean, as far as depletion of the groundwater is one thing, but the contamination, it's all unconfined, we are connected.
Right.
And, yes, so one water well can be affected to the next water well. The problem here is, is that you asked me who's responsible for that? You're responsible in your own house for that water, and the reason why is because there was no baseline water testing done beforehand, and that stands up in every state that this has been done, the oil and gas company, and it works every time, that that was there before we started. And if you don't do baseline testing and prove that your water was fine, and it's an expensive ordeal, that it wasn't, it was fine before they started drilling, you're gonna be responsible. They're gonna get out of it like they have everywhere else in this country.
What about, though, even like the cone of depression factor? Like for, like if my neighbor has a well, I have a well, and then all of a sudden, there's all this water being withdrawn to, you know, drill these fracking wells, or to be used for the fracking process? Is there nobody responsible for that either? I mean...
Again, it didn't rain.
Okay.
So what they're gonna say, it didn't rain, we're low on water, this, that, but test has to be done to prove that before drilling begins.
This would then be a policy, I guess, more question, what do we do then as concerned citizens? Because if, I mean, if the federal laws aren't protecting us, can our state pass a ban on it, and it not be subject to the federal law?
No, we could do that.
Yeah.
And local ordinance could...
If enough citizens, if enough citizens sign the petitions, and if enough citizens raise cane, and they'll have to do it.
Okay. And then, there's one more gentleman, but a technical question, how are they abandoning these wells? You mentioned two of them were abandoned, how are they, are they going, are they filling them with grout that's like two miles long?
Well, you know, it's supposed to be, they're supposed to be cement grouting them off, whether there's somebody there to watch that procedure go on or not, up in the air. And years ago, we had, actually, just a couple, two, three months ago, I had an oil and gas fellow that stepped up to the podium and kinda joked about it, that, yeah, we've had hundreds of abandoned wells in Michigan, we've done it for years, and years ago, we used to just cut a tree down, a pine tree, turn it upside down, stuff it down the well, pour cement bags on top of it. So we have thousands of abandoned wells, oil and gas wells in Michigan, mainly oil wells, that have been abandoned like that. See, not properly abandoned. That's gonna be a huge problem in the future, like was experienced in Port Huron, when they were injecting chemicals, or doing the injection wells over, and I believe it was Quebec, Canada, and it was actually coming up in Port Huron to our supposedly abandoned oil well. There was seepage coming up from there, and they correlated it from Canada, Canada side, so...
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Joe, that was an excellent job. I've done my own research, my name is Tom, is that I'm studying energy systems at U of M. I'm one of the coordinators for the lessfendfracking.org group. If you're interested in joining us, we need a lot of people to help. We need 90,000 signatures out of the three counties in the area, McComb, Wayne, and Oakland. But I just wanted to say, Joe, that I have done my own research, and you were dead on tonight, and what you said is almost identical to what a professor out of Cornell University said, who had done academic studies of fracture propagation, and he also worked for a company called Schlumberger, which is a fracking company. So this is a man who speaks very well, he's got video on YouTube, I recommend that you go see it, it's almost, you're gonna hear almost a lot of the same stuff, but Joe was dead on, and the gentleman that was here earlier, I'm sure he had his own interests, we all have our own beliefs and things like that, but I just don't, I think that if you do do your study, you're gonna find that this is the truth. I do actually have a question for you.
Yep.
Do the companies actually pay anything for the water they produce, they take out of the ground?
$16 an acre. Take as much water as you want. When they lease that property, there is no cost for that water, the water's free to them. That's one of the real attractive things of Michigan. The shale play that we have in Michigan is a very low-producing shale play, it is not worth it. If they had to truck their water in, they wouldn't be here in Michigan. That shale play is, like I say, four to five times deeper than everywhere else in this country. And everywhere else in this country, they don't have available fresh water right there, where they can drill an 85-foot well and take thousands, millions, gallons of water out of it like they can here. So, when they go for that shale gas that's miles down and doesn't produce here, they make up for that by not having to pay millions of dollars for trucking fees to bring this water in to do this fracking operation. So they waive that cost right up off the top, and now it's a little bit more economical for them to do it, because they're using our water, and they're not paying for that water. That's a very good point. They're not paying for that water, which I imagine people here in Ferndale have a water bill. We pay for our water. We're gonna have to finish this off real soon, we really need to be out here by 8 o'clock, so maybe one more after this one, if anybody's interested. Thank you.
Mine's quick.
My name's Tom Allen, I'm an engineer from U of M. And I don't understand why you don't emphasize it on alternative conservation. I mean, you know, LED light bulbs work really well, I'm an electrical engineer, and they use a small fraction of the energy, and you can get a hybrid pair, but, I mean, there's lots of ways to conserve energy.
Oh, absolutely.
Why is it always the premise that we gotta use more?
That's right. Well, if you look, I have a fact sheet back there, I'm in working, I don't have any sightings for the things yet, I will soon, but I mention that, because conservation is the top, right there, if you can cut your, like we did at Farmington City Hall, we cut our energy consumption significantly, I think more than 50%, so, I mean, just that. Anyone else? There we go.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Joe McHugh, I just want to thank the two of you for presenting this evening, I thought you did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
I just want to bring to the attention of everybody here, the language that was used by the gentleman who spoke unofficially on behalf of the oil and gas industry, he said, "Do your research." Now, doing your research is wonderful if you have the time to do it, but I would contend that you don't need to do your research, you can use your logic, because once you do your research, it takes time, and at that point, it may be too late, because if it's contaminated, like you mentioned, then we can't use the water, right? Now, on the other hand, you can use logic that I've heard from both my parents, clean up after yourself, and then, if you do this enough, you realize, maybe I shouldn't make a mess in the first place. So if you just use that logic...
There you go. Ted, thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming today, I hope you got some good information out of here, and go out there and learn more, and be active. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Jim, thank you.
What's that talking about?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I hope that it was as good as you think it was.
I think so.
Yes, absolutely.